Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Option of the agenda, a couple of things. We're going to take a number fourteen and move it to six point five. And other business. We'll vote on what we discussed in executive session. Other than that, I think we're good. You good? Public comment.
I have nothing.
Town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I have one item tonight. I would like to ask the Select Board to consider a recommendation that is coming from myself and from the manager of the recycling center and transfer station, Chuck Perro. This is for a vacancy that we have at that facility, and we have interviewed probably six candidates at this point, and we are recommending that Brian Lesperance of Brunswick be hired as the next full-time employee at the facility to serve as an attendant in the recycling center and transfer station areas.
Is that how he pronounces it?
I may have that.
Because it's like Lesperance.
I think maybe I was closer than you were, but...
I didn't even try.
I'm not going to either.
Anyway, I move we hire him because they're really shorthanded over there.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Thank you. You can move on to other parts of the agenda.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Consent agenda.
Well, I will move the consent agenda for the approval of the minutes, the municipal valuation return, Cumberland County tax assessment, and authorization of the warrants, and I want to hold the local road assistance program out to talk about it, but I move those other things, at least, or the other four things.
Oh, second to four.
No discussion? All in favor?
So, I have a question about the local road assistance program because it... You talk about having Christie being able to certify, sign the certification in the future. Tell me about it.
Well, this is an annual event that happens every year, and I think, you know, it would be the town administrator, whoever that might be in the future, but it would...
We're keeping you around for it, don't worry.
But it would remove the authorization having to come to the Select Board. You know, we can certainly not do that, and we could leave it at the municipal officers' level, which is...
I'd like to add something to that as well. So, the state has gone all electronic, and they send things electronically, and they're always surprised that we don't... This year, when they started that, they're surprised that we didn't return it right away because most municipalities have a designee.
So, you had to wait two weeks for us to...
Because it does allow a designee. What we are certifying is that the funds that we've received, and it was forty-three thousand dollars last year, went towards a capital project, and going forward, it makes it even less restrictive because now the local road assistance program funds can be used for maintenance as well, and we clearly spend much more money on maintenance and capital than the amount of money we get, although we are getting a raise next year, if you will allow a raise of the seventy-five thousand. But we're still happy to copy it and put it in your box so that you're aware of the funds we're getting and what we spent it on.
If you at least do that, that'd be good.
Absolutely.
So, I'll approve this year's... I move that we approve this year's Department of Transportation Local Road Assistance Program, and we, in the future, authorize Christie to deal with it.
I'll second it.
No discussion? All in favor?
Did you approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes.
You did before? Thank you.
Yes, we did. Consider executive loan of artwork.
Yes, we have John Wright here tonight, and he has a proposal for the board to consider. And on the screen, we are showing the work of art that he's going to talk about loaning.
Yes, I'm Hopps, John Wright, Hopselneck. This, what you see here was exhibited at the Curtis Library recently, so it's a rather large installation, and my collaborator, Valerie Upham, and I are looking for a space to install it for a year or so. So, we're proposing that the town would take this opportunity and hang it in conference room number two for the period of a year.
So, it'd be in place of where that white chalk, the whiteboard used to be?
Yes, yes.
So, I would take the care to hang it and remove it when the time comes and patch walls if necessary. I propose that I'd hang it with two points.
For at least a year, you say, right?
Yes.
Well, I move that we accept the loan of that for at least a year and maybe longer if you come back and want to leave it here for longer.
We'll see. All right?
I'll second it.
And I'm glad you're hanging it. I always hang it. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right. All right. Comprehensive plans to middle the state.
Good evening. My name is Al Legrow, and I'm coming before you tonight as Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Task Force to encourage you to forward the comprehensive plan for state approval as soon as possible. We have had a meeting, actually a public hearing, on August sixteenth where we determined and discussed a number of different points that were brought up during that meeting and determined that the plan that we are forwarding for you for submittal meets what the town, to the best of our ability, believes and considers to be the best statement of where we're going to go in the next ten or fifteen years, along with the recommendations to accomplish those tasks. So, I'm here to encourage you to support this plan, to forward it to the state for approval, and in addition to the plan itself, we're going to be adding a letter that talks about growth areas in the town. We're asking that, we would ask the state for a, shall we call it, an easement, if you will, on the growth area requirements because the town has unique conditions and requirements.
Exemption, you want, exemption?
Exemption, that's the word I'm talking about. And it has unique requirements. It has unique aspects that we think that the state will approve so that we don't have to specify specific growth areas in the town as opposed to having a more general area to approve distributed growth throughout the town. And so, in addition to the plan itself, the letter will be adjusted or accompanying this particular plan, and we encourage you to go forward with it as soon as possible.
Well, it's, okay, so the signers of this have to certify that it implies with the Growth Management Act and the main comprehensive plan review criteria rule. So, I just wanted to be assured that, I think Kevin's the one who's probably going to sign this chief elected official, that he isn't going to get in hot water, that it is, in fact, certifiable.
Well, in my opinion, it is certifiable. There are specific aspects of the town. For example, we don't have municipal water, septic. We have a very limited soil layer on top of granite, and we believe that this is a unique town that needs to be looked at in light of where we are geographically, where we are in terms of the realities of what we have here in the town, and not be kind of lumped together, if you will, with just a general town, say, the middle of the state or something like that. I believe that we think that we can meet and fulfill all the requirements that are necessary to get an exemption to this particular responsibility.
Well, this has been a long slog.
Yeah, it sure has.
Boy, I've attended enough meetings and public hearings, and, you know, I move that we forward this on to the state.
I second it.
And as far as those growth area goes, we were advised early on by our consultants.
I was, you were going to say our consultants helped us with that, if I remember correctly?
Right, yeah. I mean, and they put together a good, a good letter, strong justification, if you will, for exception, and I believe that this is going to go forward, and we'll have something, hopefully by the end of the year.
There was the letter that the consultants wrote for us that was included, it looked like, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yep.
So, any more discussion? I don't see anything. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Great job, Al.
I'm sorry, one last question. Yeah, do we have any idea when we might hear back?
I've looked at other towns that have submitted comprehensive plans and so on, and it's usually a several-week timeframe, but...
Do you think we'll know before November?
Well, I'm sure we're going to know before the end of the year. I'm not sure it'll be going to be before November.
All right.
But I think, I think by the end of the year, for sure. That's my, that's my guess.
Margaret McIntyre, town planner. It, the state says it takes about five weeks.
Oh, okay.
So, ideally, you know, we would have submitted it sooner. They suggest that we submit it for, and get it reviewed for compliance before the town votes on it, but it just depends on the timing of the plan, and the timing's going to work out that the vote is going to happen about when the plan review gets completed, so...
That's fun. I was just curious. Thanks.
All right.
Margaret, could you just speak to, is the final plan posted or will be posted? Can you just talk about that?
Yes, so we haven't made any changes to the plan since the end, since the first week of August. We had a redline version on our website for a month or so that showed all, so we really, it was really important to the task force to document all the changes that were made because there was so much concern about some of the contents of the comp plan. So, we had the redline version on our website. Judy Colby George from Viewshed took the redline version and took the redlines out and made the final edits that had been already approved. That process took a couple of weeks, so as of today, the redline version is off the website, and the complete final, Al and I have both reviewed it version, is on the website. We'll work on getting some printed, and hopefully by Monday, we'll have some color-printed copies here at the libraries. The elected officials will have a copy, and they'll be somewhere around to review.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Almost could squeeze in the warf hearing, but I won't. It's close enough, six fifteen. We'll open a public hearing regarding Norm Stevens Junkyard, map forty-six, lot thirty-one, ping a point, right?
Then Clark Codes. We had the public hearing this afternoon at three, left there about three forty-five, never, no one else came to the meeting. Norm and I had a nice walk through the junkyard. How much else has changed there? He's getting rid of some of the cars in front of the fence. He has a couple going out tomorrow that are outside of the fence, and he's already moved some.
Good, that was the complaint last time, so, yeah, good.
That's why I approached them a year, a week ago.
All right. I see no one here speaking to it. So, at this point, I'll close the public hearing and make the motion, David?
Yeah, I move we issue this junkyard permit to Norm Stevens for another year.
I second it.
No discussion? All in favor? Don't go anywhere.
No, okay.
All right. At this point, we have a warf hearing, more than a warf application, seventy-six, Connor Rock Road, map six, lot sixty-one.
Seventy-six, Connor Rock Road, ramp and float, no eel grass, nobody was at the, well, the one neighbor did come to the site visit, excuse me. I had no objections to any of the placements or anything about the warf.
No.
On the ramp and float. Not, there is a little seawall or erosion control happening with this, and I could, it's very evident that it needs it. Other than that, it was a good, good site visit.
Yeah. Clean application?
Yes.
Pretty straightforward. I wanted to mention that we have two ramps up for bid at the end of this, but I noticed that they're both the wrong length, so... I'm, I'm all right with it. I'm good with it.
All right. I move to approve the application as the harbor master indicates. There's no hesitation to navigation, no injury to the rights of others in relation to fishing, following, or navigating.
Thank you.
I'll second. No discussion? All in favor? All right. Central Emergency Services Building Architects Contract and Financing.
I'd like to introduce Andy Highland. He's the architect with Port City Architecture. We've been working with that company and with Andy for probably a year and a half, and the voters have approved moving forward with the Central Emergency Services Building on Mountain Road. So, one of the first steps is to get a contract signed with the architectural firm for the additional work that they're going to do. I'd like Andy to talk about the approach that he suggested, which is in this contract, that the town would go out for an RFQ, essentially, I think, request for qualifications for a construction manager at risk. That's part of the process and the approach that he is recommending the town take, and that's incorporated into this agreement with Port City Architecture. Sure.
Hi. Good evening, Andy Highland, Port City Architecture, as Christie said. So, we've talked with the committee about it for quite a while, and it's the approach, there's a couple of different approaches to the municipality building, a new building. The traditional approach was design, bid, build, that we would design it in a vacuum, send it out to contractors, and get proposals back. The problems that have occurred with that over the years, that's, that's kind of waning in most, most of the municipal areas and probably throughout construction. Problems are that, you know, subcontractors that aren't qualified sometimes will give them a price, they, you know, then, and they, you know, you run into just problems throughout. Also, we don't have anybody kind of looking at the drawings, you know, while we're making changes, so coming in, if it comes in over budget, it's a scramble at the last minute. So, what, construction management at risk, and it's been used, we've used it probably in the last fifteen, twenty municipal projects that we've done, I think most all of them. We're doing it in Agunkwit right now, Augusta. We've done it in Yarmouth and Falmouth and pretty, pretty much everywhere. So, they'll, you'll hire, you'll put an RFP out soon, and we'll assist the town doing that. We have some good language that'll help you kind of ask the right questions, and there's a lot of good construction managers out there. So, what they do, it's a two-part bid, essentially. One's pre-construction, so they'll come in early, and while we're designing it, while the town's sitting at the table, we'll do some initial pricing with them. As we keep developing the design, they'll kind of keep helping us price it to make sure that we stay on budget and we stay within the six million that's been allocated. And they'll also help us, and we have a pretty extensive soft costs because we don't want to get the building done for six million and have no furniture. So, you know, we add in all of the, the soft costs necessary and the, you know, security cameras and communications equipment, everything that you need. And, and then at that point, it comes into the second phase, and which would be where it actually gets bid by qualified subcontractors. So, most all of the project will have three bid numbers. They, the construction manager will pre-qualify them to make sure all three plumbing contractors are capable of doing this size job, that they have good reputations, aren't going to go out of business midway. And, and then, you know, as the bids kind of come in at that point, the C M will issue the town, it's called a gross maximum, you know, profit or gross maximum contract. So, they guarantee that they will build the building that's documented on our plans for that price, and they'll have a bit of contingency in it for themselves, and the town will have some contingency as well. But it's been very effective in making sure that, that the project stays on budget. Changes do happen. I mean, in the economy, the different, you know, prices of different materials can go up and down, and they're very on top of that, and, and it'll have some subcontractor involvement. So, that's, you know, as we go through, it would be the pre-construction piece. When you issue this, you said it's a, it's a RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. It's an RFQ slash, you know, P, in that they'll also give you in an envelope what their pre-construction cost would be and what percentage that they would charge to manage it. So, it would be all the subcontractor costs plus a percentage that they will offer to manage it. So, those will be available to help evaluate the C Ms as well. So, we've had a lot of, I've had a lot of really qualified C Ms that we've worked with before that have interest in the project, so I'm excited to get going and, and on a successful project for the town. If there's questions, I'm happy to take them.
I've been through it. These two might have something.
I wondered if you just wanted to comment on how you arrived at the amount that you're charging the town. You use the state method?
Yeah, what we, what, and it works very well, so state, I always call them Bureau of General Services. I think they've changed their name up there, but they, that they help manage, you know, school contracts and, and construction for towns. So, they issue a, you know, to help towns when they're hiring architects to do a municipal project or a school project, they issue what they think are the fair rates. So, it's a sliding percentage. The bigger the dollar value of the project, the lower the percentage number gets, and the, and the less complicated of the project, the lower. So, in that price, are we at seven point, what?
Seven, seven point seven percent of the hard cost.
Yeah, so we'll, and we'll do, you know, fixed, when, because we know that the project's going to come in, I think I allocate it typically, and it's been our experience that it's eighty-two percent hard construction cost and about twelve percent as soft cost. So, we just base our number on just the hard cost, and it's worked out very well and very equitably for past projects as well.
So, you'll be coming to us with some drawings, I guess, at some point, concrete plans to move forward?
Absolutely. So, right now, we have a schematic plan, you know, we've kind of went through it, gave you numbers on what our experience has been to get to the bid number, this one. And there's more nuances, especially with this project. You know, we've got a septic field we're not tying to, a municipal sewer. We have other, you know, there's some fill in that area, et cetera.
A lot.
Yeah, so we'll go through, so part of, as we start through there, we'll get to, we're going to develop the design a little more from the schematic enough that we can take it to the planning board and take it to any state agencies that are necessary for approval. So, we'll manage in that fee also, you know, getting, and there are some, the actual time of doing the permitting is supplemental services, which we've noted in there, but, but we will get the permits, make sure everything is, works out, move on to the final construction documents that are really, that's what your contract is with this construction manager. You know, we turn, if there's a disagreement, we turn back to the construction documents that they agreed upon and say, no, that's right here, that's in it. And we also have a written set of specifications on what type of materials that we want to use and to get the town a good quality project at the best price.
Seems like the less risky way to go, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I move that we contract with Port City, including the construction manager proposal.
And could I just say, adding, we just had a few tweaks this morning, and, and so I sent them, yeah, and so I just want to make sure you're on board with that.
Yeah, I saw that. That was fun. That made perfect sense.
And they weren't major, they were minor.
Mainly dates.
Yeah.
Through tonight's date.
Yeah, right.
I'll second it. I think that had to be done still.
Any discussion out there on this? I don't see any. All in favor? Well, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And with the committee still, so they'll, we'll still have town involvement and, you know, as we go through the process, so it'll be a lot of work for you, Christie.
No, Mike, too.
Mike, okay, Mike, so one of you guys.
Shared.
Thank you so much. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
And Matt, you must have really loved the financing part.
There wouldn't have been a board even for me. I came in and talked to Terry about it this afternoon, actually.
So, I'm not looking for a formal decision this evening, just wanted to, the board previously held a workshop with U F A C, the Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services, and reviewed its report. There were a couple of outstanding matters to review. For example, if we issued our own bonds for this project, six million dollars, would our continuing disclosures be radically altered in a way that it would really require an additional person to keep up with the reporting? And we found out that it's not a radical change to issue our own bonds or go through main municipal bond bank, and David Eisenthal did issue you a letter. You may recall that the difference in cost between, in this report, between issuing our own general obligation bonds or going through the bond bank was point zero nine percent difference. So, it really came, comes down to the practicality of the work and proceeding, and so I'm just looking for consensus that you're definitely leaning, we are leaning towards going to the main municipal bond bank in the spring, and between now and spring, we would issue bonds, excuse me, bands, bond anticipation note financing for both the boat launch project and the Central Emergency Services Building. So, just looking for consensus or if you had further questions, a formal, if you have any questions tonight, I'll certainly answer those, and then I'll be back before you with a request for proposals for the bond anticipation note financing, since both projects are getting going. Your next item is the boat launch.
Want to nod?
Please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Notice award for Mitchell Field Boat Launch and Engineering Change Order.
So, I might invite Mark Ironman, who is more or less our project manager, to maybe give a little background, and then we have Dan Bannon here as well.
I would say more than less.
And Dan is our engineer with G E I. So, Mark, would you like to give an overview of where we're at in the process?
Sure. Good evening. The town went out to bid, I guess it's about six weeks ago now, for construction of the boat launch at Mitchell Field. Can't hear me?
Mark, can you turn up your volume on your end, or?
Well...
They're also raising it on our end.
Uh, I'm about as high as I can go here.
Just speak closer to your mic, and I think it's, we can turn it up on this end.
We have our technical person checking it out.
Mark, for what it's worth, I can hear you just fine.
You can hear me?
Oh, now we can hear you.
I can hear you.
That's better.
Hallelujah.
Is that better? Hello?
There you are.
Better.
He was that voice.
Yeah, that voice.
Okay. I guess it's about six weeks ago, the town solicited bids for the construction of the long-discussed boat launch at Mitchell Field. Contractors were asked to bid in three elements, a base bid that included all of the work except for the trailer parking area up at the old, what's sometimes called truck turnaround uphill from the bandstand. There were two alternates... There were two alternates. Alternate one was to rebuild and enlarge that trailer parking area. And alternate two was to pave and stripe the rebuilt and expanded trailer parking area. Town received three bids. The requirement of the bidding was that the contract would be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, taking the sum of the base bid and any alternates that the town chose to go forward with. The low bidder was Wyman and Simpson of Richmond. You have their numbers. The base bid was around $1,003,000. In the packet, I think you have Dan's spreadsheet that then adds in about $100,000 for alternate one and another $100,000 for alternate two. The project has additional costs other than the contract with Wyman and Simpson. We have made a commitment to pay a wetlands mitigation in lieu of fee that's around $65,000, $67,000. I'm doing this without turning and looking at the numbers so you can hear me. There's also a cost for the site services. And you will shortly consider a contract amendment from GEI to provide those services. And that leaves, if the town selected the base bid only, I would call it a healthy contingency with the current amount of funding available. If it selected the base bid in alternate one, there would be about $150,000 in contingency, about 10% of the construction costs. If the town chose base bid and alternate one and alternate two, then the bulk of the available funding gets used up and the amount of money available for contingency becomes limited. So what the process is, since part of this project is being funded with ship grants from the main department of transportation, is at this point, the state main department of transportation has approved the town going forth and contracting with Wyman and Simpson. There is a process where if you decide you want to move forward tonight, the town formally notifies Wyman and Simpson. Then they submit to the town the various paperwork in terms of insurance and bonds and contract copies, et cetera. Once the town has all of that, then it can formally authorize the contract. So there are really two questions before you. One, do you want to move forward with Wyman and Simpson at this point? And two, what do you want to include in the contract in terms of the two alternates?
So the bottom of the spreadsheet, it talks about the two alternates. They're both alternate one. I think the second one should be, yes.
Yes.
To save confusion. So if there's money left over.
This is probably the best one to look at, the summary.
If, in fact, there is money left over from contingency, enough to do the paving, maybe we could just move forward that later on. But I would think we would want to stick with just alternate one at this point.
Mr. Chairman, Dan might want to speak to that question about the idea of doing alternate one and holding off on alternate two and the possibility of, if you will, negotiating with the contractor when they're gonna be doing other paving, if it, if there is additional money available to do it. Dan, do you want to?
Sure, yeah, happy to add a little bit. So all of these, any combination of the base bid and the alternates is within the budget, but the available budget right now. But as Mark noted, the level of contingency that would remain, the more alternates that are awarded, the less that would be. This is a large project and most construction projects do face some change along the way. And so going into the project with some contingency may be a wise decision so that if there are changes that add to the cost later, the project doesn't go over budget. An option that the town could consider would be to award part of the project now, say base bid plus alternate one. Get through the majority of the construction. The paving that would be covered by alternate two would be one of the last things that would happen at the end of the project. So by that time, you would have a good sense of if there have been changes during construction that increased the cost or what you have available for funding and could consider adding the paving back in if there's still funding at that time. I don't think that we could necessarily ask the contractor to hold their original bid price if we don't award it at the time of contract award. If we look to add that into their contract, say, six months from now. But we could request a proposal. We could negotiate with them. Hopefully, they would hold their original price. But there, there could be some risk there that they would come back with a different price.
But their price could be lower as well, couldn't it? Highly unlikely, I understand, but. But it doesn't guarantee that it necessarily goes up either.
Right, right. Under the Construction Phase Engineering Services, it suggests that we use a town staff member for the day-to-day. Would that be Mark?
Day-to-day, Don Miskel has said he would be willing to
Oh, okay.
kind of take that on. I don't know if his wife is thrilled about this.
Getting him out of the house?
So.
You're too good with alternate one?
We gotta get this thing done, so at least that gets it going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move that we contract with Wyman and Simpson and we stick with alternate one. And that we authorize Christie to take care of the necessary paperwork.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Spike Heibel Harpselneck. I don't know if this is exactly pertinent, but one of the, I'm in favor of the, of paving and striping because I think it organizes boat launch, the trailer activity best. If it's gravel or it's a crushed stone, there's other problems with that and it may lead to some less organization of people with their trailers. But if we pave it, I would hope we could use some kind of a permeable paving instead of letting it just be a hard surface that runs off and causes other problems that we all know about. So that's just my thoughts about the paving as part of alternate two, I guess it is. But otherwise, I think it's just fantastic that we're moving ahead.
Finally, yeah. Finally. All right, any more discussion before we vote on it? All in favor? Just like that.
Did you have worries?
Request for placement of bollards at Mitchell Field.
Mr. Chairman, you have to act on the engineers? Change order.
That's right, sorry about that.
And I just want to mention for the record, we did post the initial proposal from GEI, but we did receive a revision to that proposal dated September 18th. So I think Dan Bannon can, can speak to this proposal, this change order.
By the way, Dan, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, sure. So GEI was contracted by the town, oh, I guess going back to 2022, I believe, for services for the Mitchell Field Boat Launch Project. That scope included design and permitting phase services and bid services were added to that, that scope by a previous change order. We've now reached the end of our contracted scope. So we've submitted a change order to the town. That does include some request for compensation for additional work, additional services that were required during the final design and bid phase process. The, that process became a little bit more lengthy and involved than we had anticipated. So we're requesting compensation to cover that additional effort. And then we've also included a, an additional task that was not part of our original scope for construction phase services. And that would involve GEI assisting with administering the construction project, working with the town and the contractor to, to schedule site meetings, to have some degree of field oversight, review submittals, review pay requisitions, the normal construction phase engineering services. So that is the general scope of our proposal. And those services would be provided on a, a time and expense basis. So we have provided a budget that's intended to capture whatever, what we think would be required. If the, if the actual services that are required vary from that, the total could end up being less, could end up being more. But it is, it's an important service that really is required to make sure that you get a quality project built and the contractor's being managed. And so.
I see you reduced the original proposal by $6,000. I appreciate that. I move that we approve it.
I have some issues with, I have no issue with approving the, the second part of it there, the construction and engineering services. But when we had the last change order on April 7th, I was pretty, I thought stern that I didn't want to see any more change orders after that. And here we are again with another $14,000. And that's, I guess, a hard pill for me to swallow because we weren't really updated that you guys were incurring more cost, to my knowledge, until all of a sudden a couple of weeks ago. You know, this would have kind of been nice to have been kind of kept in the loop, maybe a little ahead of time. And it looks like a lot of these are, are due to questions and stuff and comments that had to be answered that, that town staff and the bidders or the contractors had and stuff. And I guess if the design fees, in my thoughts, and I mean, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, if it had been done better, maybe there wouldn't have been as many questions. You know, like, it's a hard pill for me to make taxpayers pay more money because stuff change, I guess you get what I'm saying here? It's, I'm having a hard time with the $14,000. I do appreciate you bringing it down six and I don't have any issue with the 97. But at some point, we gotta stop being the cash cow.
Thank you.
Well, I assume this is it for adjustments from GEI. Am I correct in that?
Well, he just said that there would be more potentially during the construction and engineering phase. It could go up or it could go down. So I wouldn't say it sounds like it's the end.
Could we get a guarantee that it won't go up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan?
I mean, I can't really give you a guarantee.
Hesitating on that one.
Yeah, that's.
Well, try, try your best. You know, you know our feelings on this and we, you know, we're dealing with taxpayers' dollars here, not, you know.
Right.
I would say that if you see that it's looking like we're approaching that cap that we've agreed to, that there would be some discussion with the town well in advance of that. So we're not made aware of it after the fact. So I, I think that is something we would hope to see happen.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
Well, there's a motion on the floor.
I'm not gonna second it.
What's that?
I'm not seconding it.
Repeat your motion.
You know, I move that we go ahead with this proposal.
The September 18th proposal.
The September 18th one, right, the latest one with $14,000 and $97,000.
All right. We've got to keep it moving. I'll second it.
Can I make a different motion?
Sarah.
I make a motion that we approve the change order for $97,000 for the construction and phase engineering services only.
Oh, yeah, that's not gonna fly. I'm, I'm gonna second David's motion. Any, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
I'm sticking to my guns.
That's fine.
I know where you're coming from, you do.
It's one of us has to.
Oh, and keep that up. All right. Then I think we're good here.
Are you authorizing me to sign that?
Yes.
Okay.
We are.
Yes.
It was in there somewhere.
It was. It absolutely was in there.
All right. We good with that?
Yep.
Look at the important stuff. Request for placement of the bollards at Mitchell Field.
Don Miskel, Mitchell Field steward.
King of the bollards.
I've worned those bollards.
Don Miskel, Mitchell Field steward. So we saved all the hardware from the old pier before it was demolished. And the four large bollards, everybody knows, are at the end of the causeway. Inside the admin building garage, since that time, were six cleats and four, what they call double bit bollards, which are about five feet long. They're about 20 inches high. They've got two great big round stubs on them and you use them to tie off the tankers. Those have sat in the garage all this time. And so now that we have an admin building contract pending, we have to empty that garage. We moved the cleats today to the generator building. And rather than hide these four bollards again in, inside or over in the field where the grass is gonna grow up around them, I thought that it would be better if we placed them sort of along the waterfront. They're large enough that somebody could sit on them. I promise I won't use black paint and nobody would want to sit on them in the summer. We'll pick a different color, probably gray, being a Navy guy. But we'll put some reflective on it. But I talked to Ron Ponzianni today about making sure that, you know, he had something that could move them. And so I presented a plan there where we would space them along the waterfront on the grass just off the road. When I paint them, I'll also put some sort of reflective tape. I'm not touching anything. I'll put some sort of reflective tape on them so that nobody runs into them at night.
People can tie their cars on them to keep them from drifting away.
There you go.
How far back from the shoreline are they?
They, that question came up yesterday. Christie called me. I did some rough measurements last night on Google Maps. You, you can blow it up and go down and get a distance. They were, the ones, if you're looking at the causeway, the ones that would be on the swimmer's beach side were upwards of 115 to 119 feet.
Where's the closest one?
Probably about 109 feet.
All right, so beyond the setbacks.
The closest ones would be on the Mary Meaning Shellfish side. And the placements are approximate, because I, I looked at that. I don't want to have one of them just sitting in front of the boat launch. So we'll probably move them a little farther down and maybe take some of that zumac down. But generally, two on each side.
It's not the kind of thing that needs a vote, is it?
I think the consensus. I mean, we, we wanted to make sure that the board was fine with this proposal.
You got my nod.
I really appreciated your sketch. Was that you?
Yes.
Yes, that's nice.
You're quite the artist.
I think, yeah.
Well, I've had that sketch for eons.
If you wanted, maybe think about donating it as artwork, you know, we could consider it later on.
Well, loan it to us.
Well, loan it to us.
But we really did want consensus. We didn't want these put in a location and then people saying, well, you know, who approved that and, you know, who authorized that? So we want it to be authorized by the board.
If you, if they don't like them, you can put them in my yard. I like them.
We have no objection.
Don't tell my wife.
Yeah, and when we place them, we'll, I, I'm going to put like a, a plastic bag underneath each one and then we'll get them cleaned up and, you know, get them primed and painted.
And the Mitchell Field committee discussed this? It was a recommendation that?
This was a quickie on my part as we went through, you know, we're under pressure now to clean the admin building garage and get everything out. No. Did not go through the committee.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Go for it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All right. Set a public hearing regarding, regarding the November 4th municipal warrant.
Yes, so there are four municipal items on the ballot for November 4th, one of them being the comp plan, one of them being accepting gifts and grants for Truffant-Summerton, one for entering into a long-term agreement to put emergency communications equipment on a tower in Cundy's Harbor, and the fourth one is for dry hydrant easement. We are required to have public hearings because they're secret ballot items. You don't go to the school and discuss the articles. So this is the opportunity to do that. We looked at a couple of different locations, but we're recommending that we hold the public hearing at Harpswell Community School and we do so on Tuesday, October 14th, 6:00 PM, I think, was the time that.
So that gives us our time spreads and everything.
Yeah, yeah. Most people start voting if they're going to do absentee within that kind of three weeks before the date. And so this, the state worked for all involved.
And that covers all four of the ballot questions.
Yes, right. Right. And I think, do think it'll be important to say, there's no changes to the comp plan. So this is not a public hearing where we're talking about changes. This is the plan and you can discuss, you know, what you like or don't like or what comments you want to make, but there's no opportunity for change.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
I move October 14th then. At what'd you say, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
I second it.
All in favor?
Great, thank you.
All right. Compensation and benefit study consultant.
Yes, so this is an item that was approved in the town's municipal budget for 2025. It's been a while since we've had a kind of, a professional consultant come in and look at job descriptions, compensation levels, how we compare to other communities. So we did put out an RFP. We received one response from a company in Falmouth, Maine. This one's based out of Falmouth, Maine, KMA Human Resources Consulting. I have checked with their references. They've worked for some other communities. They initially came in high, more than we had budgeted. We've budgeted $20,000 for this project. But we did have a conversation with them, myself and the deputy town administrator, and we talked about how we, as the administrative part, could work with our staff to update job descriptions and we could take on that piece, share those updated job descriptions with the consultant. So this won't necessarily include employees sitting down with the consultant. That was not something we could really afford to do. If we want to get this comparative kind of analysis of what other towns are paying for similar types of positions, what are the benefits that other communities are providing for their employees? It's a competitive market. We want to retain good employees. We want to be able to attract new employees. So it really is time for us to take a look at this issue and to bring in somebody with some expertise who can help us do that.
Well, I want to thank you guys for taking on, I mean, that saved us if, I'm ballparking and it was like $34,000 or so. That, that saved us by you guys willing to take on that task. So with everything else you have going on, so thank you for that.
We do our best.
You know, then, well, I think people should be aware of how much that is sometimes, you know, and how much you guys have saved the town by wanting to be able to do that yourselves. So I personally have no issue. I'll let David do his thing if he wants to make.
Well, no, that's completely in line with what we talked about two weeks ago. So no, you go ahead and make the.
I make a motion that we accept the contract, correct? That's why you're better at doing the motion thing. I'm the second guy.
How about to approve their proposal and authorize me?
Yeah.
To sign a, an agreement with them to proceed.
Well said.
Okay.
You move that?
I move it.
Okay, I'll second it.
I'll do my, all in favor?
Okay.
You got the easy part.
I know.
Never changes.
All right. We, we got some ramps that we could put out for bid.
Yeah, maybe Don wants to speak to that.
Don Miskel, Mitchell Field steward. There were two ramps that have been staged at Mitchell Field for a while. One is the Potts Point ramp because there's no dock. And the other one was an older ramp that was actually in the generator building for I don't know how long. And so in the process, we had to move the Potts Point ramp out of the concrete pad because we're getting ready to do something to the pad. So we created a open area. Eric Field came over yesterday and we, and we also pulled the ramp out of the generator building, recommended to Christie and she got with Paul and now they're putting them up for bid. So if anybody wants to see the ramps, when you're looking at the generator building, standing on the perimeter road, they are to your left, a little bit farther down. They're outside, easily visible and anybody can inspect them.
Great, thanks.
I move that we put these two ramps up for bid. And what, when, when would be the closing date for the bid?
It's a good question.
I thought we were just.
Maybe four weeks?
Sure.
It sounds good.
Yeah.
Four weeks would be good.
From today, yeah.
Good, I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Public comment? You just up.
Hey, hey, hey. Make a public comment about this person over here. Since we're moving stuff around at Mitchell Field, can we get an update on the boat? And can, is there some reason we can't get rid of that boat?
So the Harvard master.
Let it go over your house.
Is able to summons this person and it's got to go through a court proceeding, summons, et cetera.
Is it costing us a lot of money to, to go through this whole process?
I think it would look good over your house.
We, we really haven't spent any legal fees at this. We've, we've received some legal advice. It's been minimal.
I actually, we're talking with Paul today about it. We may have found we're going to investigate a couple of places that may be able to take it.
Wonderful.
We found out that Grimels took a different boat that was a little bit smaller, but for, it was only a few hundred dollars. So we, we're going to look into that going forward. We might be able to get rid of it that way.
It's, it's that much closer.
What's that?
It's that much closer to take.
Thank you very much. That much. I can, I can relate to that.
Paul had the summons with him today.
When they took Jacob Pike, they took it out of New Meadows. They took it down to that facility in Portland. Now, she's a lot bigger boat, but I'm just thinking there's got to be some way to, I mean, and.
Jacob Pike was wooden too and this one's fiberglass, which takes it a little harder.
I just want to also say that most likely the town is going to incur these costs, so we want to keep them as low as possible. So maybe Grimmel is one of our least expensive.
We have to pump the oil and the, and the fuel though, don't we?
Most likely. It doesn't appear as if the owner is going to take responsibility.
But if it goes to Grimmel, Grimmel will take care of the, the fluids in it.
Right.
For additional feed.
Thank you. One of my favorite.
Like they said, you can have it.
You could go to your house with a, with the bollards.
You could.
At least we don't have to mow it. Don Miskel, Oars Island. I'm going to leave here tonight, go and pick up my, pick up my son and drive back down Route 123, Mountain Road, Route 24 to my house. Just hope that the state's going to finish painting the sidelines on. Route 123 is much worse than Route 24, but I've watched some creative driving of people who, when the lights are coming at them and they're trying to look off to the side of the road, there's just no white line there.
Nope.
So I'm hoping before winter comes that we get those white lines painted. Never mind that, the damn bridge. But the point is that what, what the state was waiting for was the drains.
They got them.
And they got them. And you see they're installing them finally. And there's paving equipment back there today, again. They were, maybe it'll get done.
I think what they're waiting for was the, the waterproofing material.
Yeah, they put some sort of, it looks like rolled roofing.
It's, it's to protect the concrete or the asphalt.
Yeah, okay. Just, you know, I've, I've watched some creative driving. Night, I usually am back and forth three nights, four nights a week. Maybe we can have Ponzi.
Why don't drive at night anymore?
Have Ponzi mention that to DOT. Yep.
Good idea, David.
All right. That was Boba. Other business. We have a, we have an executive session and agreed on an abatement for.
I move we approve that abatement.
I second it.
No discussion? All in favor?
And we should just say that was for hardship purposes.
Yes. Thank you. Any other business?
I do have one other item. We had put a bid out to do some work at the entrance to Truffant-Summerton.
Yes.
Some paving and over at Devil's Back, we didn't get any responses. So we'd like the board to extend that deadline two weeks to see if we can get some companies to bid. It's a kind of a small project, so sometimes it's hard when everybody's so busy for them to kind of fit that in, but.
I move that we extend the bid. I can get this one.
Second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Is that it? Anything else? Terry, Christie?
Do you want anything?
Nope.
In that case, we're adjourned.